Okay, good evening, everyone. I want to welcome everybody to the council meeting for the records, Monday, July 18th. Start the meeting at seven o'clock as we usually do, but first we'd like to stand for a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right. I have to make this announcement in accordance with Mass., General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20. Please note that tonight's meeting is being both audio and video recorded. If anyone else present is recording the meeting, please identify yourself for the audience. Is that Abby Taylor from the West Springfield Record? Okay. I don't want to take a roll call?
Certainly. Counselor Laflambeau.
Present.
Counselor Griffin.
Here.
Counselor O'Brien.
Here.
Counselor Eager.
Here.
Vice President Clune.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Present.
Counselor DiStefano.
Here.
President Sullivan.
Here, thank you. Okay, approval of the agenda. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Clune.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau.
Yes.
I vote yes, it's unanimous, thank you. Flying along. Counselor Powers, you want to open a public hearing for us?
Yes. Move to open the public hearing on the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to Chapter 300, various sections, home-based business.
Second.
We've been seconded. Okay, we have a public hearing open. Counselor Powers, you want to let folks know that?
Yes, so we've had some good discussion at the Ordinance and Policy Subcommittee meeting, and it seems the biggest question on the proposed changes here aren't necessarily to the changes of the businesses themselves or the additions or subtractions, but the enforcement provisions of those. So what we decided tonight, instead of pushing this out through August so that people who might be on vacation can attend, we're going to have a study session on the home-based business amendment on Tuesday, September 6th, at 5:30. And then we are going to discuss and vote, per the Subcommittee, on Tuesday, September 20th. And just for the public, the reason why those are Tuesdays is because of Labor Day on September 5th, and then September 19th is West Springfield Day. So those, that month, those two meetings are going to be on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is open, so if anybody have any questions on what Counselor Powers stated? Okay, I'll entertain them. Oh, Linda.
Linda Parent, Belmont Avenue. My question is on, was in the, reported in the paper, so I don't know if it's right or not, but why isn't the Board of Appeals the one who would make the exceptions instead of the Planning Board? And that was in the paper, it stated that the Planning Board would hear any exceptions and make a ruling on them rather than the Board of Appeals.
Well, we can take a look at that and bring it up during the study session. We'll get an answer for that on September 6th.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, want to continue to pu? Oh, we have another speaker.
Melissa Hansen, Beauview Terrace. Was there any discussions about vehicles and size and how they have to be parked or where they can't be parked?
Well, there was quite a bit of discussion on that.
There was. I just, I know it's a public hearing, so there was. I know that two, two years ago, that was actually the largest reason with the Planning Board why it was actually returned to the mayor and myself. I know this time around, we put some emphasis on that, and in addition to the enforcement provisions, or in addition or conjunction with those provisions, that's actually one of the concerns, is the vehicle size, commercial vehicle type. And of course, there's always a lot of hypotheticals because there's so many different types of commercial vehicles. So, but that is something we will be discussing at the study session.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, you want to?
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing to Tuesday, September, September 20th.
Second.
We've been seconded, discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Vice President Clune.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
I vote yes, thank you. Okay, this is the time of the meeting where we go to public comment, so if you want to speak as part of the public comment period, you have to come to the microphone, identify yourself, provide your address before your comments, and per Town Council rules, each speaker is limited to five minutes, and you cannot speak on a topic that was a subject of a public hearing that has been closed by the council. And for everybody's information, the public hearing on marijuana was closed. Does anyone else want to speak? Anyone like to address the council on any other topics? Okay, seeing none, we'll go along. Approval of the minutes, entertain a motion.
Motion to.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes of June 21st, 2022.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor DiStefano. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Clune.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Vice President Clune.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
I vote yes, unanimous, thank you. Okay. I believe we have a brief presentation. Are all those folks here? This is Comcast in West Springfield, I believe it's titled. You want to tell us about what you're doing.
Good evening, I'm Eileen Leahy with Comcast. My colleagues, Amy Horan and Brad Plauso are going to give you the presentation, and I'll step up now.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Amy Horan. As Eileen told you, I'm Government Affairs Manager at Comcast. First off, I'd like to thank Mayor Reichelt, Chairman Sullivan, and members of the council for allowing us to join you today. Let me take you to our first slide. We are here today to discuss two important programs that can help residents get connected to the internet who otherwise could not afford it. First, I'd like to give you a quick overview of our network so you can see why these two programs are so crucial. Comcast has led the way to expand broadband adoption with our Internet Essentials program, which is helping to enable individuals in need to access technology needed to participate in society, and this need became even more evident during the unexpected COVID-19 pandemic. Because we double our network capacity every two and a half years to stay ahead of demand, our network has thrived during the COVID traffic surge, which allowed households to remain connected to work, school, healthcare, and families. Comcast has made a huge investment in our fiber-rich network over the years. Our advanced network passes and is available to every single home and street in West Springfield. We are constantly evolving what our network is capable of. It exceeds today's technology needs and is well-prepared for the ever-changing needs of the future. We have even proactively increased our internet speeds 21 times in the last 21 years. We have, we offer an extensive range of internet speeds and pricing to meet our customers' needs. Our Internet Essentials tier has helped to connect more than 900 low-income families right here in West Springfield. To the next slide, this is about our network management and support. As many of you probably are aware, the backbone of a network is crucial to its ongoing success, and that is why network management and support is a priority to Comcast. There is much more to operating a powerful, fiber-dense, reliable network than just putting fiber into the ground. We constantly upgrade and expand the capability and reliability of our network. That is why we have over a 99.9 network reliability, and this allows our network to continue to deliver fast speeds even under the heaviest uses, as was evident during COVID. Our engineers and cybersecurity experts are monitoring our network 24/7 for outages, service issues, and cybersecurity threats, which are often detected well before they affect our customers. We constantly are deploying new technologies to keep our customers connected, safe, secure, and private. We run over 7,000 diagnostic speed tests daily, which help to proactively fix issues before they arrive and to position our network to be well-prepared to meet tomorrow's needs. For example, all of our customers, including all residents of West Springfield, now have access to gig speeds resulting from our network upgrades, and we will continue to increase speeds as we, as a result of our ongoing investment in the town. All of what I just discussed is to assure you that our network is fast, reliable, and constantly evolving with the ever-changing needs of the future. All West Springfield homes have access to our network and our gig speeds, and we are focused as a company on broadband adoption to help low-income residents get connected to the power of the internet, which is vital for participation in society. I would like to now introduce my colleague Brad Palazzo, who is our Director of Community Impact, and he will provide you with the overview of two important programs in place that tackle broadband adoption and allow access to internet for low-income residents of West Springfield.
Thank you, Amy, and good evening. I wanted to talk to you all tonight about the Affordable Connectivity Program, known as ACP. It's the successor to the federal government's Emergency Broadband Benefit Program, known as EBB, designed to help low-income households connect and stay connected to the internet. Comcast participated in EBB since its inception in May 2021 and continues to participate in ACP. Comcast has made the ACP benefit available to all tiers of our Xfinity Internet Service and Internet Essentials for those customers who do qualify. We are working to ensure that all of our internet customers who qualify are aware of this benefit so they can take care, take advantage of it and sign up. To qualify for the ACP benefit, a member of the household must meet at least one of the following criteria: participate in Medicaid, SNAP, supplemental security income, federal public housing assistance, veterans and survivors pension benefit, tribal programs for residents for qualifying tribal lands, receives benefits under the free and reduced school lunch program or the school breakfast program, including through the USDA community eligibility provision. And if they don't qualify for any of those or want to qualify under their income, they can do that if it's at or below 200% of the poverty level. And eligible households that do enroll in the program can receive a maximum monthly credit of $30 a month toward their internet and/or mobile service. The credit for tribal lands remains at the $75 per month. Comcast has expanded the range of services eligible for the benefit to include both internet and our mobile plans that can help consumers save money, and in some instances, which I'll talk about in just one moment, maybe even get internet for free. So since 2011, this has been an issue that Comcast has been deeply committed to in helping our communities close the digital divide. Internet Essentials confronts the three primary barriers to internet adoption, many of which you know, I'm sure: cost of service, cost of a device, and low digital literacy skills. Internet Essentials has grown from focusing on bridging the homework gap for school-aged children to being deeply invested in providing digital equity for all low-income populations. As Amy noted, the program has connected nearly 900 households in West Springfield. The Internet Essentials program offers internet service for $9.95 a month, speeds up to 50x10 megabits per second, as well as Internet Essentials Plus service for $29.95, speeds up to 100x10. Both of those services would be free, leveraging the Affordable Connectivity Program benefit. Customers also have the option to purchase a new internet-ready laptop, if they so choose, for $149.99. The success of Internet Essentials over the last decade has been built through local partnerships between Comcast, school districts, libraries, elected officials, and nonprofit community partners, and that's here in West Springfield, across the Commonwealth, and across the nation. Comcast is taking the same approach in our efforts to inform our communities about ACP that we did with Internet Essentials, and the benefits, taking advantage of the program. Working in partnership, we can help more eligible residents in West Springfield take advantage of the federal government benefit. In the last slide here, we encourage all eligible households to complete the National Verifier Form, which is at www.acpbenefit.org, or they can call the number 833-511-0311 to verify eligibility and sign up for the benefit. If an applicant applies online, they may receive an immediate approval. If the FCC cannot confirm their eligibility automatically, they will request additional documentation and provide information on how the applicant can submit those documents for review. That portion could take up to 48 hours. And after the household has been approved for ACP and receives their application ID, they can then visit any participating service provider, but in this case Comcast, visiting us at xfinity.com backslash ACP, or calling a dedicated line to assist with this program at 844-389-4681. In closing, as a company and community, it's imperative that we work together to help people connect to the transformative power of the internet, both at home and on the go. We, as a company, will continue to partner with nonprofit organizations, for example in West Springfield, like the Boys and Girls Club, who we hooked up with a lift zone during COVID to make sure that they could stay connected during the pandemic when kids were there versus, unfortunately, being in school because of the pandemic. And that effort supports digital literacy programming to help more people learn how to take full advantage of the internet. Again, we'd like to thank the mayor, Chairman Sullivan, and the other members of the council for the opportunity to present on our network and ACP tonight. Thank you.
Counselors, any questions on the presentation? No, good. Well, thank you very much, you guys did a great job. Appreciate you coming in, thank you. Okay. All right. Any counselors have any communications they'd like to bring forward this evening?
Just one.
Counselor Griffin.
You know, I just, I'm thrilled that last evening, one of my individuals who, who I had the opportunity to coach at the Westfield Starfires was selected in the first round of the Major League Draft, the 30th pick overall, young African-American gentleman by the name of Reggie Crawford. I want everybody in West Springfield to get behind Reggie. Reggie is second to none as far as his work ethic and his, the way that he goes about his business. He has worked his tail off to get to that level. The first of its kind, as far as I'm concerned, ever announcing a first-round draft pick and being associated with a first-round draft pick. But if I, if I had to choose a person that would, would be the first-round draft pick, it would be Reggie. Reggie is an unbelievable person. Today, you know, for the last, the last person he needed to message was me, and don't I get a message from Reggie Crawford today? So, I know he's not here, he's in San Francisco, but he's far away, but I just wanted to have all of West Springfield congratulate Reggie and watch him as he progresses through, through life. You will not, your, your fanship will not be underestimated by, through this kid. He's, he's the real deal. So, thank you, President Sullivan.
Great, appreciate that, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor DiStefano.
I just wanted to ask that the council take a moment of silence to remember Chief Burke, who I'm sure everyone knows passed away a little more than a week ago. And so again, I would just ask for a moment of silence.
Anyone else? Okay. Let's go to unfinished business. I'm assuming that's why everybody came to visit us this evening. Counselor Powers, I believe this comes through your ordinance committee? You want to make a motion?
Sure. Move to waive the formal reading and approve the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to the following sections of the zoning ordinance. Section 300-2.1, terms defined by amending and adding definitions related to the medical and adult use of marijuana. Section 300-5.3, Table 5.2, Table of Use Regulations, Business Districts, and Table 5-3, Table of Use Regulations, Industrial Districts. By adding the use, in quotations, marijuana retail store, as allowed by the Planning Board special permit in the business A, B.A., business B, B.B., industrial I, industrial park, I.P., and industrial park light, I.P.L., zoning districts, and adding the used marijuana production facility, as allowed by the Planning Board special permit in the B.B., business B1, B.B.1, and I zoning districts. Section 300-8.8, registered marijuana dispensaries, in parentheses, RMD, and off-site medical marijuana dispensaries, in parentheses, OMMD, and Section 300-8.10, non-medical marijuana establishments, by deleting and replacing a new section titled Section 300-8.8, marijuana uses, including regulations for the medical and adult use of marijuana.
Second.
Okay, moved in, seconded, further discussion. Counselor Powers, did your committee take a position on this?
I do not have my notes in front of me.
Okay, not a problem. No?
No, we did not take a position on this.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor O'Brien.
Make a motion to amend this motion to allow this issue to be placed on a ballot for the 2023 election cycle.
Could you please turn on your microphone?
Make a motion to amend this motion to allow this issue to be placed on the ballot for the 2023 election cycle. Amend this motion.
Okay, I didn't hear a second, so, and our assistant city solicitor.
Second.
Counselor Eager. Is this legal motion? Did you seek, Counselor O'Brien, did you seek opinion from the city solicitor?
I did not, I did not get an opinion requested on this matter.
Why can't I amend the motion?
Did you vote on that motion?
I'm making an amendment to it.
Town clerk, can, you don't know if this is legal or not?
It's not.
Assistant city solicitor, say, and then Counselor DiStefano.
That was, you know, earlier I had sent an email request to Solicitor.
O'Brien.
O'Brien Smith.
Scott.
And asked how we would be able to go about, as a council, to answer some of the questions, and I think confusion that began at the last meeting, and it kind of continued into some articles in the paper. And based upon her response, and if, you know, I hear you correctly as well, the council doesn't have that option. Certainly not a lawyer, but, but I don't believe, based on what she said, we could amend this motion to ask for it to be able to go on the ballot. We could either vote it up, we could vote it down, or we could amend the substance of, you know, the specifics, you know, regarding where it could be allowed and things of that nature, but that it wasn't as simple for us to be able to put it forward as a ballot question. The mayor could have withdrawn this and, at that point, asked for it to be on the ballot, but we lack the ability to do that, if I understood her response.
That's correct. You understood it correctly. Counselor Eager.
Yeah, so my understanding is if we wanted to be a ballot initiative, we have to vote it down today, which I think is respectful of all the voters, and then put it on as a non-binding resolution for the next election cycle.
Counselor O'Brien.
So with that in mind, I'll withdraw my motion, and if I could speak.
Well, Counselor Eager, you withdraw your second.
Withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. Counselor O'Brien.
So this is an open letter to the people who have been trusted with making decisions that are in the best interest of the town. Next year, you'll all be furiously campaigning for reelection and telling everyone how qualified you are and how many boards you sit on, et cetera. You will be humbly asking for residents' votes. This year, you have before you an issue that occurs infrequently in the lives of local politicians, an issue that puts your promises of next year in peril. It has happened before: a dog track, a golf course, a casino, and now retail marijuana for the second time. Mayor has chosen an off-election year to put forward retail marijuana for a second time. It is not by coincidence. He feels that he has the council he needs to push it through. He might be right. He wanted a quick vote, and then any complaints could then be directed to the council, as they are the ones who voted it in. The leadership of this council has been strangely silent on this issue. They're reluctant to make their intentions known. Once residents spoke against this issue and signaled the desire to have a referendum, the issue should have been decided. Leadership should have informed the mayor that the issue was dead, and he should pull the proposal. Facebook poll is not scientific, and municipal election is as scientific and true to how residents feel about an issue as it gets. Both sides of this issue should welcome a referendum. It should not be decided by nine city counselors. It gives the impression that special interests are at play, and the council is being used to forward these interests. The vote on 7/18/22 will reveal where your loyalties are, and denying people the chance to vote will not be forgotten, no matter how many shiny campaign mailers or advertisements you put in the record next year. The mayor should be leading in this, and he should pull the proposal. It's no longer about retail marijuana, but rather denying citizens the right to vote on this important issue. People can buy pot anywhere. Why can't West Springfield decide if it wants that as part of its community image? So by not voting this down tonight, you're forcing the residents to go out and get petition. You have to get 2,200 signatures. That's a lot of hours, it's a lot of work. I have here 1,200 signatures already, so they've already started working on it. But you're forcing the residents to then go out and do what we should be doing, is giving them a chance to vote on it. As I said earlier, when Northampton was having financial difficulties, they said they have a dozen marijuana dispensaries, but the revenue they bring to the city through taxes is expected to be less than in past years, as the cannabis industry develops in other parts of the region. The gentleman in the industry said he gave $900,000 to Westfield in tax revenues when he's on the last meeting. So when you have two or three more retail spaces in West Springfield, that $900,000 will turn to $400,000. How much does West Springfield really expect to get in money? So a year, waiting a year to have the people decide clearly, definitively, once and for all, is not asking a lot. They can decide on the issue, and they can decide on who they want representing them at the same time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion. Counselor Laflambeau.
Yeah, I have three amendments that I'd like to bring forward to the ordinance, but before that, I, I don't know about the dog track as much, I think that was before my time, but I do know for the casino, that was mandated by the state, and any community that wanted to consider having a casino, it had to go on the ballot before the voters. So it is a little bit of a different of an issue of what we're talking about here tonight that I think is just kind of important to clarify. But I have three amendments that I'd like to bring forward, and I believe I have to do one at, one at a time. Move to amend Sections 300-8.8, C3, A and B, by deleting the following language from both subsections, except where the Planning Board, in issuing a special permit, approves a reduced distance upon finding that the location will cause no substantial adverse impact due to site-specific factors or other mitigating efforts agreed to in writing by the permity and made conditions of the special permit, which is found on page 83A of the proposed ordinance.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in, seconded, further discussion. Counselor Laflambeau.
Thank you. Currently, there is a 500-foot buffer between a marijuana business and a school or a park, but in the ordinance, it allows the Planning Board to waive that buffer and allow a establishment to be closer to a school or a park than 500 feet. If this amendment were to go through, it eliminates that and makes sure that the 500-foot buffer is always in existence, and no establishment could get closer to a school or a park.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion. Okay, ready to vote on the proposed amendment? Okay, Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Clune.
Yes.
Counselor Eager. Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes, unanimous. Counselor Laflambeau?
Okay. Move to amend section three hundred dash eight point eight, C three, by adding the following language as subsection C. A marijuana retail store or marijuana production facility shall not be permitted within three hundred feet of a pre-existing residential structure, page eight, and we're adding the subsection C.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded, Counselor Laflambeau.
In the proposed ordinance, it doesn't have any sort of buffer between a marijuana retail store or production facility and other communities, and I think one of the things about us not going first is we can look and see what works. In Holyoke and Westfield, they have a buffer between a residential building and these type of establishments. I think it would be beneficial to the town to add this amendment to the proposed ordinance.
Okay, thank you for the discussion on the motion, proposed amendment. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes, unanimous, thank you. Counselor Laflambeau?
Okay, number three. Move to amend section three hundred dash eight point eight B by adding the following language as subsection six. Limitation, no more than three retail marijuana stores shall be permitted within the town of West Springfield. That's on page, it would be on page seven.
Second?
Moved in seconded for the discussion.
Yeah, one of the big concerns I've heard from residents is there is no cap on the type of retail stores that could be coming into town, so I think three is a good number. One or two, you might not feel the economic impact. Four or five might become problematic where issues do arise. The town might not be able to address them and identify them in a timely manner. I think three is that kind of middle ground. You can feel the economic impact of them. If an issue comes up, then you will be able to, the town will hopefully be able to identify that issue and solve it in a quick and timely manner before it begins to snowball and turn into a bigger problem.
Okay, further discussion? I do want to alert the council that I believe in the state rules that you cannot have less than twenty percent or allow less or make more than twenty percent of liquor stores or package stores. So in West Springfield, we have twelve, so the minimum would be three that you could, you can't go below three. So that proposed amendment is right in line with the state minimum. Okay, for the discussion on the proposed amendment. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes, unanimous, thank you. Okay, any other proposed amendments? Okay, then we're going to go to the main motion as amended. Discussion on the main motion as amended. Nobody? Oh, Counselor Griffin?
So I just want to explain the way I'm voting and how, how this topic has kind of evolved over the last several years, since two thousand sixteen. And as far back as two thousand sixteen, this council has taken the steps to protect the town via originally on a moratorium, then an extended moratorium. And then in two thousand eighteen, we had a public hearing and then took a vote in two thousand eighteen. That vote was voted down. The reason why I voted against that at that particular point in time was that I needed to learn a lot more about the industry than, than I did in two thou, than I had in two thousand eighteen. And in these years that, these years that we've, we've had, now it's proposed again, I've done my homework on this issue and watched the regulations being formed by the Cannabis Control Commission. I watched how the security and the apparatus and how these retail operations work in other communities, and frankly, in our community, in a medical, in the medical world, from a security standpoint. The vetting that, that, that these individuals have to go through is pretty strenuous, frankly, a lot more strenuous than most other entities that have to, want to open within our community. So I think over the last several years, I've changed my position because I think they've met their burden. From, from my standpoint, they've met their burden on how they're going to operate or have the facilities operate within our community. We still, we still have our own, our own boards that will make some decisions as well. So my position has changed over the last couple of years that, that I, I just needed to learn a lot more about, about the industry. I think it was in, you know, in two thousand eighteen, it was kind of in its infancy, the Cannabis Control Commission and, and the like, and then trying to find out who's actually entering into these types of businesses, and they control that. They do the vetting for, for those individuals who are entering these types of businesses, and they vet them through the Cannabis Controls Commission. And then every seed now is labeled and, and it's marked inside the facility for sale. Every individual who walks into these establishment is ID'd. So those types of things, again, I think they've met their burden, and I just want to make sure that I'm on the record to say that that is the reason why I believe, as they've met their burden, I can now of sound mount, of sound mind vote for this in the affirmative.
Thank you. Counselor Eager?
So I too was here in two thousand eighteen. I remember the debate, and I understand, I understand the feelings. That said, this process we're, we're asked to dress, we have to deal with, and I don't like it. The thing is, last time, well, we, we had, we had to vote. We basically said, hey, we don't want, we legalize in, in this area. And I actually disagreed with that, okay? But at the same time, the people spoke, okay? And now we have weed that's free, I mean, not free, safe and legal, and it's available just a few miles over the border. Now the question is, do we want it in our community, okay? And most of you, I'm looking at your body language, I think that's why you're here. And we're only nine people, okay? I know it's more efficient to change your mind than nine people. It ain't right, okay? What is right is to put this on the ballot and let you guys vote on it. Now, I'm willing to back whatever the result of a non-binding resolution comes up, okay? If you want it, I'll vote for it. If you don't want it, I'll vote against it. But the point is, it's a right thing to do, and, and I encourage my other counselors to consider to voting against this and give the voters a chance to make a decision on, in an open election, and that is the most accurate way to get it done. But to do that, we have to vote against this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Other counselors? Oh, Counselor Laflambeau?
Thank you. I just want to take a second, I guess, to also explain my position and where I'm coming from, because I am in favor of this proposal, and will be voting in favor of it tonight. In January, I was sworn in as the District Two City Councilor, and I believe it's my duty and responsibility to serve and uphold the interests of District Two residents. And in two thousand sixteen, there was a ballot question that talked about the taxation, regulation, and legalization of marijuana here in the Commonwealth. And although the town voted down that measure, I look at it from a District Two perspective, and both precincts, three and four, supported it. In fact, District Two supported it at a wider margin than the town opposed it. To me, that's the, the referendum or the question that I, that I look at and I see and shows what the majority of residents that I'm sworn in to represent and be their voice on the council feel. I understand not everybody in District Two supports it. I've had a lot of conversations with people that were against it in two thousand sixteen, they're against it now, and, and they're going to continue to be against it, and that's fine. There are very valid concerns regarding impaired driving and protecting our youth that I hear loud and clear, and I'll continue to partner and work with anybody who's willing to work with me on trying to solve those and any other issues that may come about if this ordinance were to be successful in pass. There are some benefits as well, which we've heard from, you know, in the past, but I, you know, regarding the economy and jobs and expanding our tax base and utilizing the manu infrastructure, manufacturing infrastructure we have and generating tax revenue. But I think the combination of the two thousand sixteen question, which shows me how District Two voted and the economic factors, makes me confident in my vote tonight to vote in favor of the proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? This might be a little long-winded, so I apologize. But anyway, good evening again, and here we are. To start, I want to say when the vote was put before the voters in Massachusetts two thousand sixteen, I actually voted against proposed legalization, sale of recreational marijuana in Massachusetts. I understand this was a statewide vote and not specific to whether sales would be allowed in West Springfield. I get that. I will also acknowledge that I was not on the council in two thousand eighteen or in the mayor's office when that council took a position and vote on allowing recreational marijuana sales in West Springfield, although I also do not remember any public outcry in two thousand eighteen to put it on, up for a vote for the public either. And while on the subject of a townwide election on this issue, I am definitely not opposed. However, the, this petition is presently in front of the council for action, and I'm responsible to act on the petition from the mayor in accordance with our city solicitor's guidance for protocol. But let me say this, I would be happy to assist any of you who are here, listening from the comforts of your home, the place or in the, present here, to place this on the ballot in accordance with the charter. So one of my concerns is, and maybe get a little off tangent here, is that I checked with the town clerk today, and he told me nobody has gone to his office to take out the proper paperwork. Now, the reason I mention this, because if you want to make sure you do this properly, and there's certain protocol you have to follow, so whether you have twelve hundred signatures or twenty-two thousand, don't forget there's certain rules that have to be signed by ten registered voters. The petition shall be accompanied by an affidavit signed by five voters. There's certain things you have to do other than just collect signatures. So I think it'd be important for anybody who's collecting signatures, and I'm, again, I'm happy to help make sure this is done properly and all your Ts are crossed and your Is are dotted so that you don't go through this process only to find out that you're not following the process. So you have to be careful when you do this. So again, if you're interested in my assistance, I'm, I'm happy to help out. I just hate to have folks work, working tirelessly, collecting signatures, only find out that they submitted, you know, improper context or, you know, et cetera. So anyway, I'm happy to do that. I will say when the council voted last time, I believed allowing labs, testing facilities, even growing, should have been allowed, but as we know, nothing related to marijuana, marijuana was allowed in West Springfield, other than the state mandated medical marijuana. But I believed, and still do, labs would have brought professionals and engineers into our community, would have provided not only good paying jobs, but West Springfield could have been a leader in this area of the industry. And let me go off on a tangent here, just so some of you know me, some of you don't. I want to say here that I've been to funerals of my friend's kids, seven, quite frankly, who have died from heroin overdose, and I like everyone in this room. Well, I'll skip that. Anyway, so actually, I want to say, you know, everybody in this room's been affected by addiction issues, my family especially. So I move along and say that sale of marijuana is everywhere around us. It's available for purchase in accordance with the law, although I've never been inside a cannabis retail store, I understand that they're heavily regulated. For purchase from one of these facilities, it's also my understanding is much better than off the street, purchasing something that might be laced with whatever the product might be. I've also been concerned for many, many years about the messages our children are receiving about drugs, and I'm going to mimic Paul Harvey here for a minute, just to explain how the CARE Coalition actually came to fruition. So as Paul Harvey would say, God rest his soul, now you know the rest of the story. So when I was mayor, I went to a meeting with first responders, one of his effect brothers, I think Vice President Clune might have been there too. I don't remember everybody sitting at the table, but the message I received loud and clear was, and still is, drugs are everywhere and entered our middle school. After the meeting, I called the superintendent, Russell Johnson, to my office. I told him we had to set up a program starting at a middle school level, or better yet, at the elementary school level, to educate our children on evils of drugs and focus on prevention. The superintendent, I know it's hard to believe, he told me he didn't want to do that. He said that was the job of the parents, and although he was correct, I told him we have these children for six to eight hours a day, and I wanted a program started for prevention and education about drugs for our students, and that is how the CARE Coalition started, maybe not by name, but that was the inception of it. So I've always been big on messaging and what the messages we send to our children. I've been asked what message the council will be giving to our children if we vote to allow zone change for the sale of recreational marijuana, even though some parents might be interested in my opinion on this subject, I'm pretty sure middle school children, high school age children could care less. I rarely formulate an opinion on such matters until I hear input from many parties, and as many parties as possible. That's why I usually don't go up and start preaching fire and brimstone from the pulpit until the, usually the evening of a vote. Prior to the public meeting on this, I was leaning towards no, but after listening to one of the residents made what I believe to be a joke about using money from cannabis companies to combat drug issue, and joke or not, I believe this is a great idea. So this is my proposal. The council votes to approve the zone change for the sale of recreational marijuana and labs, et cetera. However, we utilize the money from these proceeds to educate our youth. I provided an agenda item tonight to get moving on this immediately with the creation of a revolving fund. So although we talk about taxes, this money from any marijuana community impact fees would be placed into this revolving fund. It's not about taxes for me, it's about sending messaging and creating programs for our youth, so they do receive the proper messaging. We have to do more in this area, and why not utilize the money from the varying companies that we're talking about? Similar to what is done with gambling and legalizing and educational programs related to legalized gambling, the dollars from this revolving fund can also be directed and should be directed to certifying some of our officers to be drug recognition experts, D R E officers, I believe they're called, to determine if someone is under the influence. Presently, the CARE Coalition receives their funding from federal grants. This year was approximately one hundred and five thousand. Wherever in two thousand twenty-one, it was only thirty-two thousand. So by doing this and voting yes, we will be enhancing the proper messaging to our children, and it will be funded by the very sale of recreational marijuana, which we're all discussing. And we have a more consistent flow of money into these programs, as you can see, the money going to CARE Coalition varies from year to year and varies significantly. And as I said before, those of you who are collecting signatures, I have this placed on the ballot, I encourage you to meet with me so I can make sure that you have all your ducks in a row, so if you do actually want it on the ballot, it's done properly and not booted once you think you've completed the job. Thank you. Other discussion? No? We already have a motion and a second. That's what we're talking about. We want amended again? Okay, ready to vote? Yes, Counselor O'Brien?
So the, if, if you vote no, then it goes to a ballot, and then if the people vote it down, there won't be any retail pot sales in West Springfield. But if they vote it in, then we could do what you said we could do with the money. I mean, that, that to me is, it's the perfect balance between the issue. Allow the vote, a no vote, no retail, a yes vote, retail with the money going into a revolving fund. It's one year. That's, that's the, we simply need four votes to turn it down tonight and move it directly to the ballot without having to put our ducks in a row. It'll go to the ballot. That would be my suggestion.
Okay, further discussion? Counselor Smith?
I just also think it's one year closer to educating our future and our children. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone who hasn't previously spoken? Counselor Griffin?
It's just not right. It, it doesn't go to the ballot. It doesn't. So that's, that's fictitious language, and I apologize, it's not right. You're giving You're giving out information that's just not right. It doesn't go to the ballot. In order to get it on the ballot, we just discussed how you would get it on the ballot. President Sullivan, anybody that wants to go on, have it go on the ballot, he's reached out to the general public and said he'll help you get it on the ballot. But by voting no tonight does not mean, by any stretch of the imagination, that it will go on the ballot in 2023. So, I want to negate that right away. Thank you.
Counselor Eager?
Yeah, it would require, to be accurate, it would require additional step. We would have to, there probably would be a vote, there would be signature collection. But the point is, it allows a possibility to put it on the ballot, okay?
You can put it on the ballot if it's voted up or down. Just so you know. Any other discussion? We ready to vote? Okay, let's go to a vote. Counselor Laflamme?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
No.
Counselor Eager?
No.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
No.
Counselor Sullivan votes yes. Six in favor, three opposed, the motion passes. Next up, Counselor Powers.
Move to waive the formal reading and approve the proposed general ordinance amendment to Chapter 134, Article 2, marijuana establishments by deleting said article in its entirety.
Second.
Seconded, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano?
No.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
No.
Counselor O'Brien?
No.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflamme?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan, yes, the motion passes. Six in favor, three opposed. New business. I'll move, unless there's any objection to having a formal reading of the proposed general ordinance amendment to create a marijuana community impact fees revolving fund, I move the matter and formally refer it to the Budget Committee and the Ordinance and Policy Subcommittee to be taken up at the next regular meeting scheduled for August 15, 2012. Any objection to waiving the reading? That's for the revolving fund. Okay, it's moved. You guys got it.
Mr. President, for just point of order, subsection C?
Yeah, I'll get back to that. I figure we'd stay on theme. Okay, now Counselor Powers.
Because we're going to be continuing this to September, I'm going to make a motion to continue this item, section F, subsection C, to Tuesday, September... Sorry, I did not bring this up. Tuesday, September 20.
All right, seconded. Any discussion? Okay. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflamme?
Yes.
I vote yes, unanimous. Counselor Powers, we have a proposal from our town clerk.
Move to waive the formal reading and adopt the proposed resolution regarding police details at polling stations, authorizing the town clerk, in consultation with the police chief, to detail a sufficient number of police officers for each poll in place to preserve order and to protect the election officers and supervisors from any interference with their duties and to aid in enforcing the laws relating to elections.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Counselor Powers.
The Ordinance and Policy Subcommittee voted unanimously this evening for this. It was part of the Votes Act that the state legislature passed, which gave the town council the ability to set this, and we're going back to custom, which is allowing the clerk of the council to coordinate with the police department on appropriate officers in each location, which he's done a fantastic job with over the years.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflamme?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Obstain.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes, eight in favor, one abstention. The motion passes. Vice President Clune, you have anything to move for us?
Pass it over to the councilors on these appointments.
Move to approve the appointment of Alexander Serbo as an alternate member of the planning board with a term beginning July 19, 2022, and ending December 31, 2026.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion, did your committee take a position?
We did. We met this evening, and we were unanimously in favor.
All right, great. Any other discussion? All right, go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflamme?
Yes.
I vote yes, unanimous, thank you. Counselor Smith, one more for us?
Yes, I do. Move to approve the appointment of Christopher Nolan as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term beginning July 19, 2022, and ending December 31, 2022.
Second.
Seconded, how'd your committee vote on this one?
We also voted unanimously in favor.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, Counselor Laflamme?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
A little hesitation there.